Why that's Yeah. Pretty close.
Good. What did you find it? Now it's 12 o'clock, we're ready to go to work, ready to go to work. You're more proud of getting the mama job, of course.
Hey, I'm like mama. I don't like mama. I feel like a mama. Well, you're cute, you're gonna grow. Listen. I know, I'm looking for the thing that came to me last week. And I know, I promise. Oh, it's all right. I'm just teasing.
Okay, this is June the 26th, 2019, this is 4:00 PM. And this is a work session of the Trinidad Urban Renewal Authority. Today's work session was 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 set and been in the making for several months. We've been speaking of and trying to do things with the act of demolition program. And so we decided that if you'll recall back, not probably last month or so, that we needed to devote quite a bit amount of time that we could in order to try to make this, to determine how we're gonna make this program work for us, if we want to take it there and all the other things to it. So everybody's had this document for quite a while. It was put together and was edited by Greg Senar, our executive director. It somewhat mirrors Montevista's, right?
Somewhat.
Somewhat mirrors Montevista's. And they're a model, a model that's out there that they have success with and not particularly that we would have adopted in the full course of what they have, but it's something, something to think about, especially when we looked around in and around the city of Trinidad. And you know, we talked a little bit about the anti-grapage ordnance, the houses that are on there. You can go out around the town and you can make a visible inspection of your own and make a determination that there are well properties, that something needs to be done with them to make them more productive and more habitable. So that's what we want to talk about today, this afternoon. A few months ago, Commissioner Valani went out and gathered. Did you bring that with you today, Commissioner?
I did, I did make copies.
No, that's fine.
I did make, what I did do is, that was a snapshot of what was happening in March. And I did just a cursory snapshot of what's on the market right now as a comparison. And I made copies for everyone.
Well, yeah, because that was, that was, that was something that we were looking at, thought it had some purpose in, we know it has some purpose in what we're thinking and wanting to do. So Greg, anything you want to add at this point, or do you want to go around for discussion?
I've had this out on the table for a really long time. So I looked it up today and I think the data is spread more. So it's been on the table for quite a while. It's been time for everybody to review it. Those who have reviewed it, I think now is the time to start. If you need which changes or what, which changes, that would be the same time to discuss.
I did some marking up, I have more than one copy, so I've done a lot of marking up. My paper copy has the best markings on it. But in any case, I'll give my, I'll be, I'll be last in line to give my thoughts on it as far as where we want to go. And so Commissioner Valani, I'll let you start out because you, you, you had that information, you updated that information. You can give us what you have and then we can go forward from there.
Well, in, I think the thrust of all of this is, was to look at where, what, where we want to be, whether it's, you know, low income, moderate, low and moderate, which is pervasive in this document, in that language, or to change, or to decide what our, what is our market here in Trinidad. And so that's kind of what I did in March to give you an idea of what was on the market and the areas of greater need. And so now, the snapshot that I did right now was to say that in March, there were 66 homes on the market through Flex, alright, through Flex MLS. And that's, and today, today, there are 45 homes in the city of Trinidad. Only 45 homes. Okay, now that's not the total number of homes in the MLS, but the MLS includes Raffinow County, Ry, Gardner, I mean, all those. So I took all those out and just focusing on, on the city of Trinidad. So there are 25 homes under, under, in March, there were 25 homes under 100,000. Today, there are four homes on the market under 100,000. And there are currently 20 homes on the market between 100,000 and 200,000. In March, the median sale price was 149,500. And as of this day, the median sale price is 155,000. So, and it kind of gives you an idea. I also reported a status of pendent listings. Pendent means they are under contract or whether they go to a sale and are concluded is another matter. But in the Flex, there are 53 pendent listings. Thirty of those are outside the Trinidad limits and go as far as Ry and Gardner. And there are only 1,400 pended in Trinidad city limits between 100,000 and 200,000. So, I mean, there's, what it points to is there's a shortage of, of homes, available homes. And so for, in a certain category. So that's, I don't know how that fits in with what we're doing, but anyway, I wanted to bring that to the commission because I know that data. And we, we looked at median sale price and average sale price. And median sale price is, is different than average sale price.
Before I forget, I did get a call today from Commissioner McKay. She will be late because the board meeting for the bank where she works was rescheduled. So she said as soon as it gets out, she would be here. So before I get past that note and there was a sale. On, on the information that you just brought up, would you consider that then good news and bad news?
It is good news and bad news. I mean, there is, so you, you look at it. There were 10 homes under 100,000 sold in between March and now. So the bottom end of the market is really pretty, and I, and I think we talked about that a lot of those homes under 100,000 were fixer-uppers. And so they're gone. So if you want to look at that as good news, that's good news because that means people are fixing them up and doing something with them. Does it mean that people can, are there homes available for 100,000? Under 100,000? No. But who, where is the greatest need? And I think that's where, it seems like the greatest need is between that 100 and 200,000 dollar range for working families. That's, that's where. So, is that good news?
Well, I look at it from fact, good news, and that's why I ask the questions. Because the, the, the good news, I mean, the good and bad news is there were 66 homes in March. Now there are 45. So I mean, like 21 have been sold probably. I mean, so, so, so you're looking at, so, you know, there are some on market, but the market needs more homes. So that is good news. The bad news is there aren't any homes. You're looking at the availability of homes out there.
And, and I would say just from, and this is an opinion as a real estate agent in what's going on. Investors are coming in and buying at lower market for rentals. I mean, I, I have, I myself have an investor that has come in and bought two homes under 100,000, specifically for rentals. You know, so that's good news for people who are needing, these are good people who want, that provide good homes for, as rentals. And so that's good news for people looking to rent. But it also took away two homes for people who could afford to buy a 100,000 dollar home out of the market. And that's tough.
And rentals are also going up in price. They're in that timing. Rentals are going up in price.
You mean rental rates?
Yes.
Yes, very much so. And that's really hard because I think people are struggling with that.
It far exceeds whatever what you would make for a payment.
You know, and, you know, like I've talked to these, these investors and, and, you know, I've tried to impress on them the market as, you know, an economy, the rate at which you, you charge rent. And I have rentals myself. So is, you, you have to take that into account. You can't compare this to Georgetown or Denver or whatever. It's just, we don't have that kind of economy here. So, but, so.
We also have almost 24% of the population living in poverty, which is more than double the nationwide average.
We also have half our population on food assistance in Santa Fe County. City residents, it's over 6,000 people a month receive DHS money for food. $343,000 a month. So that could be possibly why, I don't know how their application process is, but with higher rents, less income.
You know, I think we're in a, in my, in my opinion, we're in a, a tight spot. We're in a tight spot because in order for us to build a workforce economy, we have to have homes for people to live in. On the other hand, we have people living in, in low income housing and living in, even living in that area that you're talking about. So how do we balance that? If we want people to come to work, for instance, I had, and I can't document this. This is, here's, this is, here's a bet. I had heard that there was a person that applied for a job here. Then, and there were two people. And that they looked at the housing market and they couldn't find a house affordable to buy that was in, that, if they're, they're selling. I mean, so they turned around and let the, let the job go. They were offered the decision. So I, I mean, I hear what you're saying, Liz. But is it possible that if we build an economy and we move towards building a better economy that some of these people can, can get off of assistance?
But the rent's going up, and I have rentals too. And people tell me, just the other day, the Mission on Santa Fe Trail, they used to be called the Mission Apartments. A customer of ours came in and it's $2,100 just to get in the door. It's $800 a month for a one bedroom, little studio apartment there. And I'm like, wow. When we owned, the family owned Prospect Plaza Apartments a few years ago, studios 350. And the best, oh God, I think we got rid of those. They sold those 10, 15 years ago, I can't remember how many, what years ago those were. I mean, the inflation of that much. But what, what I think's happening too is when, when the rental market goes up, it hurts the people that are in that, their income, you know, they raise the rent on them, so maybe they gotta squeeze somewhere else. It hurts the general economy everywhere else. They're not shopping at Sophie's. They're not at Bob and Earl's. They're not at pure ice cream shops.
At Toots and Scoops.
At Toots and Scoops. So it is a multitude of issues that the money, yeah, the housing market's good and it's booming and, and, and it's more, it's harder to find a house now than the gas and oil boom.
Well, so what, where do we, I mean, we have to have people who, people who want to live in Trinidad more viable. You know, they have a certain income and they can't buy a home.
Cougar Canyon.
So, I mean, there's, there's just lots out there.
Okay, so, so we, so we recognize we have some, some need for housing. So we have to figure out now, or, or we have to not figure it out, but we've got to throw things around as to determine how, you know, what these steps are, how, how will we as, as an agency, you know, you know, go to page five. Go to page five of the document and look at the, in the program mission. If you look at that and, you know, it, it, you read that, it's to make some determination of what we need, what it is that we want to accomplish. You know, you know, there's, you know, the main thing that we want to do is to eliminate blood. And the elimination of that blood could ultimately be to give the fixer-upper under whatever authority we have to do it, whether it be by voluntary or involuntary acquisition, to be able to take it to its next step. And, and, you know, basically, you know, if you look at, that's, that's, that's what we're talking about in that, in that mission, the program mission. Keeping that in mind, we got to figure out how we can, how we can accomplish that. Because then, you know, one of the things we got to do is we got to, we got to look at funding. The funding is going to be required to be able to rehab houses. And so how much do we get and how many of those do we do? I've, I've looked at this and I'm, maybe I interjecting my, my, my thoughts a little bit earlier than I should, you know, let it to all, give me your thoughts first. What I'm looking at is, is, is the eliminations of a bunch of structures within the town to create buildable sites for homes to be built for whatever, whatever price range they might be. Well, there's going to be for those that are in the, I don't think you're going to get a house built for 100,000 bucks anymore. That's not a possibility. So, you know, if you're looking for a $100,000 home or under now, even if you found one out on the market, it's probably going to require a lot of investment. But as I've wandered around the town, I've looked at that, at that list that we have of houses on the EDO, what my first thought that comes to mind is scribbling. Built, providing buildable lots for investors or contractors or whoever else to get those houses up there.
Yeah, we have, we have a lot of houses that you're not going to pull back into usable shape. They're too far gone.
Yeah, and, and, and you, and you can go to about any neighborhood in town. Even, even, even on the north side, our neighborhoods like, go to Pine Street. You know, you, I tie one block, right, one on one side of the street and one on the other. That, you know, they don't belong there in that kind of condition. And they would be great sites for future building. Or for somebody to get them and actually fix them up. But that's, you know, the, because of the cost. You know, depending on what we get in funds and all the processes that we got to go through. If, you know, if you look at the processes that are outlined in the document, there's a long way to go to be able to go in and up to and including get contractor and go through all these qualification processes. This is my thought, my, you know, and, and it's what everybody else might think of it, good or bad. Well, my thought is because of what it takes to be able to go and acquire the house, whatever it's going to be, and go through all the processes to get it ultimately, ultimately habitable, saleable, rentable, whatever else, again, long process. My, my thought is, you know, is, is a lot of these that I refer to are just flat and slightly. And, 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 you know, there's, you, you can locate them in, in a great number of neighborhoods throughout the city and they would be, you know, up on Dalmar Street. Robble, you know, you probably can level a whole lot. There's just a whole bunch of them that are that way. And if, and if that was to happen, even if a buildable lot wasn't, you know, taking out one house didn't create a buildable lot. But if you had several of them, you know, three or four, could you re-subdivide it and take two lots and make it buildable for one house?
Can I say, how much are, how much are, how, I mean, are people building? I'm in the building trade area and stuff like that. I don't see people buying lots and building.
They are in the big trail ranges, that's where they're being.
One of the things, and I, I think, I, I think probably Kent, the building inspector, would be able to give us some information about that, you know, as far as, you know, what does it take to build, I mean, a square foot to build a 1,200 square foot house or 100 square foot house? And I think that that was kind of an enlightening thing for me, even though I, I kind of, you can reason it out. When you think about a contractor who can build a $400,000 house and build a 1,200, 1,200 square foot, 12, well, I mean, $150,000 home. Let's do apples to apples here. And, I mean, the same amount of time might be involved in, in building a $150,000 house and maybe a more time with a $400,000 house. But the profit margin for them is much greater on the $400,000 home than it would be on the, on the $150,000 home. And so the question to, to, to bring up then is if we do level all these houses, which I agree, they can't, there's no way to bring them forward. How can we entice contractors now to come back in? Is that going to be the other step that we have to do then? To entice a contractor to come back in and say, okay, let's, you know, we need some houses built here. I mean, or do we just pass off the lot and say, well, you know, it's your baby?
Well, I, I don't know. You're looking at it, and I'll go back to, to the, the experience I had in 1989 when there were no buildable lots in Trinidad. I mean, it was pretty much done. And I built where I built because that was, came available. Looked all over, there weren't any. I mean, nothing had happened up on the west end. There was, you know, it wasn't even a, a thing in anybody's mind that Cougar Canyon would be there. So when I did what I did is I built where I didn't, not that I'm not happy or mad, but I, I did, I built there because there were no buildable lots available within the corporate limits of town. That is almost the same way today. As you, you say you want to build a home, it's almost you have to find a rural lot to be able to do it. I mean, it's just not, and then there's a whole, a difference in what you're going to build. If you want a mountain type home, you've got whole water to. These lots, you've provided, I mean, you're going to have city utilities within proximity. And so because they're, my, my thought is because they're not there, nobody's thinking of making that build. So two things, if you, if you do a scrape, one, you would, in the, in the end, create some possible buildable lots. Number two, you're going to get rid of those eyesores that are out there. I mean, anybody that goes and takes any tours of town, and that's what they have to look at, is, first thing is, is how would I want to build here? You know, I do have to go outside. Yeah, so it, it's one of those things is, is identifying the ones that would have the greatest possibility and look for the ways to be able to acquire, to be able to create a lot, not necessarily remodel a home. That's my solution to the problem. I mean, you know, because the, the remodel, the remodel or the renovation of a structure, I mean, it's going to take a lot of steps to get there. And under the conditions of where, you know, you take a mile, it doesn't take too much except to go ahead and do whatever remediation for things like asbestos or any other thing like that. And it's a matter, get a bid, knock it over and take it to the dump.
Well, I, I mean, I agree with that. I mean, having done three 100-year old homes, if you can remodel that three 100-year old homes, it's, it's a long, it, there are many, many pitfalls and, you know, there are structural problems that you don't find and whatever. But, so I agree with that. My concern is, how do we entice contractors to build?
We have very few contractors. And so the ones we have are building custom made homes.
Right, exactly, exactly, exactly. And I mean, there are some really interesting homes.
I was just, we might entice some out of town builders to come in. I mean, because we are short handed.
You just took the words out, my bad. If the buildable lots were there.
And, and they have some enticement.
Oh, go, go to Pueblo, go to southwest side of Pueblo, where all those houses were, in Pueblo, were pretty many. That particular area, I mean, there's a lot of 1,400 square foot homes that were, you know, it was a subdivision that was created, but, you know, and there are contractors in that town that do those kinds. And I was just not to say that it wouldn't be here and nobody would have that, that desire to do them. But it, it, again, those are my thoughts because as I looked at all this and I said, you know, the processes are wrong. And by the time we get there, try to qualify it all, it's just a matter of mine. My thought is level. Acquire, you know, in most cases, it's probably going to be more involuntary than it's going to be voluntary. And in some cases, they might want to do it because, you know, if they're not fixing them up, not doing anything with them, the value, the value is minimal to nothing. And in some cases, it's, it costs me more to get, to take it to the ground than it would to do anything else with it. And I guess, there's plenty of them in the town that you'd look at it and see it happen. My just question is, is do we have enough buildable lot for that to happen in the end? But, you know, if I, in some of these neighborhoods, that you, you have to drive through all that to get to your home. So badly for those people who have to reside, you know, with something across the street or up the street that has potential, but the owner was not taking, and in some cases, their bank owner.
What are the steps?
So then, do we, with this document, moving forward with this document, then, do we, do we eliminate that, that section altogether? Or do we keep it in place in the event that that, something comes up? I don't know. The section as far as the process of rehabbing.
I think you leave it in there because there is always a potential. I wouldn't want to just say everything we touch, we're going to tear down.
That, that could be.
I think it'd be on a case by case basis. But a question I have for the asbestos and the lead based paintings.
That's a problem, especially asbestos.
Would Tura be available to utilize Brownsville brands after they acquire these properties and do that? So we don't have to cost the Tura?
We, we have money set aside right now to do a few houses of asbestos removal every year because that's where the cost is. It's more than the cost of tearing down.
Yeah, it just, we paid a lot of money to county and at the hospital just recently for those pavement projects. So you start tearing them down and you got that opened up and.
But if you fix them up, you got the same problem. Yeah, once you, once you, once you're doing anything before 1978, you're going to probably have those problems. So if you say, well, we found this one, it's going to be a fixer-upper. However, you got it. So one way or the other, you're probably going to, you're going to encounter that problem.
You would almost have to do a, a cost analysis. This is how much it'll cost to tear it down. This is, or at least an average of what it would cost to fix it up. And you'd have to always take the lowest, literally.
And then one of the other challenges is the way, if you have a house that's on one of the hills, the hill streets, those are pretty tiny lots. And so in order to get a bigger house on there, it might take more than two and you end up with, now you've got 24 hour painting halls.
We'll skip those. Thanks for the warning.
But I mean, that starts happening quickly.
It does, it does. And, you know, and we, I guess we'd have to go and it's a, it's a, it's a matter of assessing where we want to go and do those.
So a lot of those kind of things aren't as easy as they look. I'm not quite going to service a lot of times. You know, I'm John Jordan, you know, I know probably, I think, but anyway, I was on this for quite a long time and I missed several meetings because my counsel, who was writing my, who was taking the data off the computer and giving it to me, left. And so I wasn't getting that anymore, so I didn't know what the meetings were or anything else. I didn't know, but I'm back. I think one of the things that we miss, and, and that's the fact that we tend to, to spend so much time and effort in dealing with minutia. And that we don't really have a broad based, overall community region, set goals to our tour. Where we can put our shoulders to the thing, working concert with each other, trying to achieve bigger pictures than just dealing with what the thing showed up in on a piece of paper or something like that. And we lose things. We, we, we have a gunsmith program up at college. I was there thirty-two years. NRA decides they're going to, let's send you site out someplace in the country or whatnot. To me, it was, it was knocked down absolutely easy positively to go out to these guys and say, get your log cave, locate your stuff for Trinidad. Because we got the premier gunsmithing program in the country. We la la, la la, smell a dump for the, the old pumps for oil and all the rest of that stuff. Sitting out in our industrial park, fitting, unusable, unfunctional. And Raton has the Wellington Center. Now, we should have been on our heels going down, going as, as a community, with the NRA trying to bring them here. You got the gunsmithing program, you got the NRA set place, both positive things for the community. But we don't think so much that way.
Okay, John, could I interrupt you and ask you a question?
Sure.
Those comments that you're making now, how are we going to apply those to what we're, what, what we're talking about here today? I don't, I'm trying to get the relevance here.
Okay, well, I, I think, I think what we need to do is we do these kind of things. We've got the detail, we've got the minutia and whatnot. I think we need to be out there carrying the flag in terms of a quality community, high per capita income and good solid reduction of different kind of issues that are in police area and so on and so forth. And focusing on the bigger picture. I, I've been, I was on this and then I lost my counsel, bringing me all my stuff and whatnot. And I went off for a few years, for, for a while. But we need to have an overall big, solid, aggressive program that this community and this region adapts.
But I think, I gotta stop you there again.
Okay.
Okay. That is not the topic of conversation here today. We, we, I mean, that's, that's not, that's not what we're trying to address. We're trying to create a program that we're going to do to make a, a, a physical improvement to the community. That is way beyond the realm of what we could do, what we're even capable of doing and way outside the authority that's granted to us by the Urban Removal Authority Act in Colorado. So if we, if we even attempt to look outside the boundaries of the city of Trinidad for regional improvement, we're, we're violating what we're supposed to do. So it, 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 to go in that direction, I understand what you're saying, because I think you, you've mentioned it before. But it's way outside of what we're trying to accomplish and, you know, it's not addressing what it is we're trying to do at here today.
Well, you know, I'm not saying we go out there and we try to convert the whole wide world of Trinidad as the premier place of the community. But having been on this group for quite a while, I sat around long enough to know, if you throw out a new idea, it's squashed real quick. Because we don't want to change. We don't want to move forward.
That, that is not what it is. We are trying to create change with this particular program. What we are trying to do here and the basis.
I agree with, I totally agree.
Well, that's what we're trying to do. And so, that's what we're trying to do is, is get beneficial and fruitful input into, into this so we can create a document and create our mission so that we can go forward. I, I can say, I'm, I'm having a difficult time understanding the relevance of, of how, what we have to do to create this, this economy or, or rewildalize the economy, because while the revitalization of, of structures may have some direct result or, or benefit to it, you know, we have to do that first. That'll come first. I mean, we've got the, you know, we, we've got the chicken egg thing, but we, that's what we're doing here.
Greg, do you feel that this document has some teeth to it?
That's the purpose of it. The ADO program really doesn't. It, it, it works fine if people work with you, but the minute we run into someone who won't take a written notice or won't do anything about it, we're kind of stuck. And this one uses the authority that urban renewal has to condemn a property if that's.
And, 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 I mean.
Yeah.
And that's the only question that, you know, we can look at the, all the fine print in here, if the attorneys, that, I'm sure Les has reviewed this or, or an attorney that, I, I think the board can either move forward with it or not move forward with it. But I think everybody here has got a good point. It needs to be, these buildings need to be raised to the ground or down. I just want to make sure we can afford to, well, fund the, the projects that we start. And, and I think it just has to be a case by case basis on the properties. Because like Greg said, with the, with the, with the way the lots are and the hilly places and stuff, that might not be feasible and might not be affordable to build a spec home or when. What was, when did that happen in Allendale? That was probably the seventies, sixties?
Allendale's pretty much the fifties, fifties into the sixties. And it was, it was a subdivision decree. It was, it was, it was not a lighted area. It was not, it was just, there was a need for housing and I think those were under an FHA program, if you look at the original Allendale. There's two subdivisions up there. There's Allendale and then Fisher's Peak Division, is that what it is? And so that one came after, and that's a little bit different. But the, the, the Allendale thing was actually, and you see those, you know, oh, it's post World War Two. Wouldn't it have been, John? Post World War Two stuff? And so, you know, if you could, if you could get a plot of land big enough to where, you know, sell all of them. I guess the most recent attempt at that was over at the Weymouth end of town. And there's a lot of manufactured modular homes in there.
And he, I think he found he couldn't put them up for what the people who would buy those homes can afford to pay.
The City View Heights.
City View Heights, yeah.
Yeah.
The City Heights?
Yeah. They outpriced the market by the time.
City View Heights.
By the time he brought them in here and set them up, they were too high for what.
North of North Avenue.
So, I, I agree. You literally can't do a hundred thousand dollar house. If you build one, even if you bring in a manufactured one, you're probably in the one seventy, one eighty range. And then we have standards here where it says you have to have a six twelve pitch on a house. Well, that just added another ten or twelve thousand dollars to the cost of house for these people. And so, in order to, because of a policy that probably was trying to keep high houses out at one point a long time ago, now we have a standard that's raising the cost of houses unnecessarily.
Okay, so a question.
But, well, no.
Well, my question is, so, so, I mean, this is, this is, this isn't going to happen today, but we're going to, we're going to take it, make some progress on it today. But with a six twelve pitch minimum, is, is there not a way to get, that we could work with or suggest to the, the, the Planning and Zoning Commission, who, they were the, that oversee that, to throw in there some compromise to say that, you know, you know, there are places where, obviously, six twelve, if you're going to build, like in the Cougar Canyon area and those kinds of places. But if somebody comes in and says, I can build houses, but I can't do a six twelve, it's got to be a four twelve or whatever else the case may be. And, and I can put these houses up at a reasonable rate. And you think that Pete, Planning and Zoning would be able to, to, to change some of the regulations to allow that to happen?
Well, we're in the process of going through redoing the entire code. So that is something we're going to get to.
And that might be why I don't have contractors in here like we used to in Trinidad, because it's just.
He got old and retired.
Yeah.
And the new ones haven't come yet.
No ones have. Well, the, the new ones have moved to Denver because they can, they don't have to do anything but graduate from high school and make a really decent living up there. At least they think they can, because they haven't priced the house up there yet.
Exactly. Again, from a real estate point of view, we need to be careful because there is a stigma attached to modular homes. You know, and, in terms of.
But they're not the way they used to be.
No, no, they're not. And there are some incredible homes that are manufactured in different ways. Those, I mean, there, there's some pretty interesting construction out there, so.
Aren't those even about a hundred and twenty-five dollars a square foot these days? You know, for the, pretty fancy.
At least.
Yeah.
At least.
Well.
So.
I'd like to see these properties acquired and, and torn and removed. And because if there's no other buildable areas, where are you going to build it in? The only thing to, city needs to woo some contractors or.
They need to build some contractors, so to speak.
You know, and, and, and that has to go with, with local banks working with these folks too.
The banks?
There's, yeah, there's a lot of conversation that has to happen between the two of them. I mean, for a guy like me to, I could turn around and, and invest in one of these properties and bring a contractor down to Canyon City. Good friend of mine, and say, okay, now let's go build these spec homes. But if your six twelve pitch is too high, then the profit margin is too low, it's a worthy investment to, to build on. Either buy the lots from Tura or from the city that it requires. So there's a lot of moving parts.
What is the six twelve? What, why was that? Is that?
For the snow load?
For the snow load, basically?
So it doesn't look like.
Really is not necessary. There's places that get way more snow than they're going to listen to, especially today.
And it doesn't resemble a mobile.
Yeah.
Why is the pitch on the mobile?
Two twelve.
Two twelve.
Yeah, it's just, it's just barely there. They've changed those. I mean, that's, you know, if you, if you look at the old stuff, it was, the newer stuff, you know, those have even gotten pretty classy as well. So, you know, those, those have changed. But, you know, I'm not, I'm not, Greg, I'll tell everybody, go back to that, that page that I talked about, the mission. You know, in reviewing that, that basically says what it is that we're trying to accomplish by, by considering this program. I mean, you know, i- 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 is, is everybody in agreement that that has relativity to what it is that we're trying to accomplish?
In the ADO process, yes.
Yes.
And also, I think if you do take over these properties and, and offer them, then you could possibly build an affordable home for a loan to mid, on, mid in combatment. They're not going to have the five thousand, the three thousand square foot home. It's going to be the twelve hundred, fourteen hundred square foot on that small lot like it was before.
And they won't have, you know, you could potentially start giving the lots away just to have somebody build on it instead of somebody having an additional twenty or thirty thousand dollars.
Well, that's the enticement, the enticement.
To the contractor or to the, to the homeowner or future homeowner?
I even go half, you know.
Or relatively low cost, again, we, we, I'd like to see us recover some, we could have. You know, and, and to the point, say, okay, if we demo it, there's a clear, a clear lot that can be built on. Number one, possibility of a house that returns at a better rate for taxes. I mean, some of those are so low on the tax roll right now that a scraped lot would probably be, be just as valuable. But if we, number one, you could build, you can create a lot that something can be built on. You get rid of the unsightly stuff that's out there. I mean, because that, I, I'd rather look at a barren lot than those things that are existing on a lot of these corners.
Now, is it true that the tax base on a vacant city lot is higher than a lot that has a home constructed on it?
No. Well, if you have, if you have vacant, it isn't?
I've been told by the assessor's office that is the case.
Yes, twenty-nine percent.
That's the commercial rate, I believe.
No.
Twenty-nine percent. Well, it's a, it's a residential, the rate assessment rate is set down by the state.
Seven something.
Yeah, it's seven point two right now. And they're going to be, if they drop it, it's going to hurt the county a lot. But there is vacant space. I think it is higher.
It is, it is higher.
I want to say it might, it is higher.
I, and the only reason I know that is because.
But.
I had to attach some land. You know, I was, it's separate land in order to build this wall to sustain my house from falling down the hill. And, and so, it, Jody explained it to me, that if you attach it to the house or you leave it as a separate lot, it's taxed higher at a higher rate. Whereas if you attach it to your house, it's at a lower rate, it's so, because there's a house on it. So that's what, that's what we understand.
So what's the city, I believe, would be taxed exempt?
Yeah, yeah. Well, so it's true.
Yeah. So.
Our property, we're going to catch them.
We won't have.
And so we would be taking away a little bit of tax revenue that the county is receiving on these dilapidated properties now if, if they are even getting.
If they have compliance.
If they're.
There's a lot of people that just don't pay.
And we take it off the tax rules until such time as, as something was built that could be.
Now that you mention that, though, we should do our homework to see, before we do that to a property, if there's a tax link on it. And you might have bought them all, you never know.
Do we have a list of houses?
Well, there is.
Oh, yeah, the, 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 ADO, we have that list from our last meeting. We have, we have a list. That's not all inclusive. That, that, I mean, that, that's, that's, that's when the city has gone out and identified and has cited property owners and, you know, that one exists, but you can go beyond that list and probably triple it of, of what's out there. And there's, there's, there's a list, but it's, it's, you know, that, that's a tip of the iceberg as far as I see it.
Ken, what is the standard? How do we, who figures the city out? I know, is it somebody that goes and says, this house is unbuildable? Who does, isn't it the building inspector?
Somebody asked that question earlier, and the reason those signs go up is we have the utility shut off. By having utility shut off, it makes them uneven, unlivable.
Ah, so that's.
That's what causes that.
Well, so then, if we want to go to that level, then we should, if we're going to, should we focus our attention on, on beefing up that ADO? The ADO portion, is that what you want?
No, this is, this will replace ADO.
So, right, so when we go to nineteen, twenty, these are really good letters. Twenty-one, we would just use these?
Yeah, about the acquisition, the acquisition matters.
The acquisition part.
Just, if you could, address some of the notes that I have in here along the way. Some of them are for clarification as much as anything else, but Mana Vista uses Sid Public Works Department to third own houses. We don't have that.
We don't have it, no.
So, I just wanted to let you know, it's still in here, but I plan to pop it because we just can't.
Well, I have that too.
Yeah, I think we had, we had talked about that in one of the initial discussions.
Yeah.
That, that manpower isn't available by the city. And that's why, I would, I would think that we would have to go out and do it out for demos.
And, and we typically do that when we can get to that level, contractors.
Do we have to go through any, uh, uh, do we have to go, Greg, do we have to go through any of these, the sections then?
Well, I, I, we do, because I want, I have a couple of questions.
Right, I do.
Okay, so that was the only note I had in here. So is there, what other things did you want to address?
Uh, let me look at my highlight here. Okay, on, on page number, I'm sorry, hold on, you want to go first?
Yeah, we go first.
Okay. And if, and if we talk about demoing and creating lots that are buildable. On page seven, it's number five. Upon acquisition, Tura shall require a deep restriction limiting the occupancy to lower and moderate. Now, we're going, are we, are we saying that that's going to be strictly if we acquire a home? Well, again, we have to figure out where our program funds come from. Because if, if it doesn't come from anything like DOLA or anything like. Because if it doesn't come from anything like DOLA or anything like that, they're doing the world. Probably have to look for them, we're trying to rehab houses. But if we, if we were able to demo, demo homes and create lots, we'd have to stick to that.
No, some of the language that's in here is in here because they use community development black grant monies to run this program. So I left some of it in there just for discussion purposes more than anything else. We don't have to follow DOLA's housing rehabilitation standards or any of those things.
Unless we get funding from it.
Yeah.
So we can, so you'll be eliminating some of that language?
If that's, if you agree with that, at this point, we'll try to do this without receiving any money.
Yes, so...
Or you could just amend it to either or, you know, depending on the particular...
Well, I like, um, this talks about putting a deed restriction on it. So I don't think necessarily...
Page seven, number five. Because if, I mean, if we're restricted by the funding that we get, like DOLA or some other agency, that may require the population that you're going to try to get in there is going to be required to be low to moderate income. But if we were to level up, level structures and have a lot for sale, you know, do we wanna tell them what it is and it has to be, what they do with it after? And that, see, it's there, put up a nice structure and relive it, whatever it is.
So what that means is to strike number five?
Yes.
Under those conditions, I'm gonna say yes.
Yes.
No, you can strike numbers now. It all depends, I guess, on the situation.
Well, it's one about housing, where, are you talking about number five on, on...
Page seven.
Oh, I have five on page eight of mine, my note.
Okay.
And I'm reading another. So five would be...
Starts with upon acquisition.
Upon acquisition.
Yeah, I see that. And what about the previous page where it says housing and other nonprofit agencies? Do we have to change any of that language then?
Where?
On the previous, where it says program managers, support staff, consultants, contractors, and then it says housing and other nonprofit agencies. I'm on page, uh, so it would be page six to you, I think.
And I don't have page numbers at all.
So it says...
I think we need to leave that language.
It is, because it doesn't mean that we can't allow something like that to be built on those plots.
But it also, but it speaks of to purchase the deed restricted properties. It has that language in it, right in the middle of it. It says, "Income households to purchase the deed restricted properties." And it says, "Those applicable to the N L U shall include and process and transfer ownership demo program deed restricted properties to participating nonprofit agencies and the parties understanding the respective responsibilities to construct homes cleared, on the cleared property and sell them to affordable sale prices to low and moderate household income." Do you see that? Am I? So if we leave that in there, we're still, we're still dealing with deed restricted properties. Because it speaks of participating nonprofit agencies and parties.
Okay, then prior to that, there's gonna have to be, it's gonna have to say that somewhere else as well. You'd have to find that in there.
All right, so it is on page...
I see the one that you're talking about, so...
Okay, so it says on, uh, on the program mission that the, it says, "Properties assisted through the A R R and demo program shall, will have restrictions for future use by households up to earning, earning up to," and it has a blank percentage, "area of median income as defined by the U S Department of Housing and urban development, low to moderate households." So that's under program mission. So we need to strike that as well.
True. Basically, the last sentence of program mission.
The fact that negatively, program mission, right?
And that one, they're not defining...
If we leave that in, it restricts us. We can do, if we take it out, we can do either or, as this mentioned.
Okay, let's establish something, first of all. Funding to do what we're gonna do could determine how we put this together. We don't think we wanna go after DOLA money or anything like that. What's your, what's your thought on that?
Well, it just, community development black grant money is competitive money. We compete with every city member population of fifty thousand for that money each time. And it comes with a lot of requirements. You, these housing rehabilitation standards are just one of them. When you start building housing under the federal rules, you follow all of the federal rules.
What about CHAFA? What about CHAFA?
That's federal.
That's federal money as well?
But that's tax credits, that's different.
So we, we need to determine what it is that we're going to use as funds to accomplish any part of what we do. That will determine where we're gonna go as far as taking this forward. I mean, it is, you know, we could, because we could set plans in place, but now we have to determine how we're going to execute based upon the money in the bank. And so we gotta determine, you know, where's our limit? Where are we gonna go with this until, you know, the other thing you gotta do is, in order to perpetuate our funds, if we go in and we level something, you know, we're gonna have to try to recover some of that. I mean, we can't just say, "We paid to take it down, now it'll be nice if you put up a house on it and we're going to pretty much give it to you at a very minimal to no price." I think we have to have some recovery to be able to say, you know, to perpetuate, to go on to the next lot. So I don't know that, you know, we have funds within ours, within, you know, and I'm thinking, yeah, Sid gave us a hundred thousand bucks about two, almost two years ago. So we've got that in the bank, plus what we're generating. That may be part of what we start looking at for acquisition and ultimately, you know, and obviously, we're gonna have to do it at the lowest cost possible. But I, you know, unless we get, once we get those lots available, I don't know that we wanna consider just, you know, Sid, with the fact that we got rid of light and so many houses we put up. I think we have to recover costs so that we can continue to perpetuate money into the coffers so that we can continue to work forward.
What does the general demolition right now?
I, I would have to check. We've, we've been spending twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars at lease just for asbestos removal.
So I'm kinda lost, um, Michelle, please.
Yes.
Sure. So do we eliminate it or do we...
Well, we would, because we, you know, that was what we...
We don't wanna be, we don't wanna be...
Yeah, we, yeah, we're not, we're gonna go out and be looking at, in fact, in a couple of, I thought I saw somewhere else where the acronym DOLA was divested in there. So I think we wanna take that out. I don't think, you know, based upon what it's gonna take to go after. If there's anything that precedes that, that mentions the acronym DOLA, we think we wanna move that.
Or, or, yeah.
In previous pages and previous paragraphs, I think we want to eliminate it, welcome.
Sorry about my tardiness, couldn't be helped.
We understand.
So then we need to really basically eliminate the housing and other nonprofit agencies that is on your page.
Well, to the degree of...
Because all through that, it talks about non-participating, non-agencies will coordinate participating nonprofit agencies to develop a new N L U, which shall be, so that whole, that, all that language there refers back to deed restricted properties, according to the...
Well, as long as we take out, you know, as long as, I think that can remain. I mean, it doesn't mean that we can't work with other agencies, because somebody may come along and say, "We can build and how do we work together?" So I think, I think we're gonna continue to work and work with, you know, if that happens, you know, we can entertain it. Maybe we don't need that in there to entertain it. We could not have that in there and still if some other local or regional housing agency wanted to do something, doesn't mean that we couldn't work with them.
So if we take it out, it doesn't restrict us from working?
No.
But if we leave it in, it does restrict us to...
Yeah, I agree.
So we, we wanna give ourselves the broadest opportunity to work. And we don't know what's gonna come down the line in the future. So we wanna strike that whole, whole section, everything.
May I ask where page you are?
On, on...
All depends on what you're looking at.
I think you're looking at page eight or, no, seven? No, eight. What paper is that?
Mine doesn't have page numbers.
Mine does. I'm working from the minutes that, mine would say page six. Mine says page six and I downloaded everything that Greg sent here for this meeting the other day. So that's why mine have the numbers that you're gonna have.
I have, this is why I downloaded from what was attached to the email.
Oh, me too. Mine does have page numbers.
Yeah, they are.
Mine has number all, I just left them whole.
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that we look at the basic program mission, what it's written, what it contains, and rewrite it in a much more positive thing. It just implies that we are pouring my own staple. If anybody was gonna come in with incredible financing goals and so on and so forth, is gonna look at that and say, "Is this what I'm getting myself into?" We gotta have a much more positive viewpoint of what we're trying to do.
Of non-restrictions on the type of house to be placed on that lot, don't you think?
Well, I just, you know, when it talks about, you know, there's always these words here. It's just saying, no, no, it has to be, a new construction has to be longer than that. No question about that. You get into this thing, oh, we're gonna encourage people to maintain the status quo. And I think we need to have a much broader, stronger, futuristic-based kind of approach to move this community forward. You know, builder walking in here saying, "I'm gonna need to try to spend a hundred, ten million dollars on my project and whatnot, and look at that and say, 'You're right, I wanna do that.'" Look at what their goals are. I think if we could change that thing, we'd change the whole program.
Well, we would, we would agree in the program mission to take out that last sentence. So it doesn't meet that percent of median income. But above that, I don't think that that would be, if you take that, John, in what it says, a purpose of what it is, I don't know that that would be...
Well, I didn't say take the whole thing. I said, "I think we ought to start by looking at the program mission, why are we here? We're here to improve the quality of life in this community, the economics of the community. We need to create jobs to keep our youth in the community and so on and so forth." And none of this implies that that's what we're trying to accomplish.
And we're not trying to do that, based on this. This document is not involved in that.
Right.
That's not involved. Including that in there is counter, counter to what this is. That doesn't, that doesn't have anything to do with that. If you read, if you read that and take, take it for what you look at, what the actual, the acquisition and demolition policy program graph, that, John, doesn't fit in there. That, to change that mission, that mission's, program mission wording, that doesn't fit there. That's not, I can't understand how you would incorporate that in there to this particular program that we're trying to put together.
Well, what I'm trying to do is move forward and not maintain the status quo. That's really what I'm trying to do.
That's what this is about, we're trying to do.
And that's what we don't say, we're about.
That's not what we're, that's not what we're trying to do here. Actually, if you go, the strategic plan that we adopted earlier this year says that.
Yes, it has a mission statement.
It has a mission statement. It's already in place. This is a whole different program.
For the, for the Tura board?
Yeah. I think I gave you that in the strategic plan.
Yes, I did, yeah.
I've read so many things, I can't remember.
Because that's a much broader...
Yeah, I think it did say that in the, for the mission statement for Tura.
Yes.
This in particular, this document is just basically for dilapidation.
Dilapidation.
Greg, this is more narrow.
I did find several more references to DOLA. Underneath general program guidelines, we struck the paragraph beginning with upon acquisition. Just prior to that, paragraph four, references DOLA.
Right, it does.
So I assume we, we'll strike that.
One, four.
And if we go over...
Everything DOLA's striked.
Yeah, everything, everything that overstriked.
That way they don't have the restriction.
Because it appears again, uh, under demolition program, section four, two. And get on the next page.
We have four, five, six, that all reference DOLA.
Contractor selection, references DOLA.
C eight, number eight is also, this refers to deed, even before that.
It's okay, if you wanna take those out, I can go through this after.
Yeah.
You don't have to spend lots of time just going through it. This is, it's not harder than this.
It's a, you're either gonna have DOLA there to help the funding or we do our own thing. I think that's kind of what we're, we don't wanna be, we don't wanna be hamstrapped by restrictions of DOLA, right?
I wanna eliminate that.
They will be, at this point, they will be a part of...
They won't be a part of this program.
However, we wanna be available to that funding either.
Right. You can, I mean, but that doesn't mean we aren't gonna use that language.
And so we can still go over DOLA money possibly on other things, if, that's not included in this document?
We may have to change the document if we decide to go after C eight. Because it will come with requirements.
Yeah, you can always amend it, correct?
Yeah, but it will come with requirements at that point, so you said.
Or could we in general just reference, uh, funding opportunities? Instead of specifically naming DOLA or someone else?
You really don't need to do that. The purpose of this program is to remove these properties.
Right.
How you fund it, you really don't need to mention it here.
The majority of this was molded off of the other document there. So we can do our own...
I took a lot of stuff out, but I left some references and just for discussion purposes.
So, are we still, these properties that are, now, let's see, that would be page eight to you. It says, "Number three, Tura will require the owner to provide and certify as accurate information of occupancy of the property from the prior twelve month period."
It's doing that because the thing says that we will not go after a house that has been vacant for less than twelve months. So we won't, we won't... The standard that we're talking about here is something that's been vacant for a year. But we have so many that have been vacant for way more than a year.
We have plenty to work with.
Yeah, we don't have to worry about this for the near future.
And that vacancy can be determined by shut-off notices from utilities?
Yeah, we can, we can figure it out in a lot of different ways. Someone wants to make the argument and hasn't been vacant, they need to make that argument.
So when we go to the end, am I jumping ahead? To the involuntary acquisition and, uh, are we there yet?
Okay, well, go ahead.
On down on number two. Says, "Appraise property, review appraisal. Tura will develop the scope of work and define probable for the appraisal." Consistent with, so this, the appraisal is to determine what we would pay for the home? I mean, what for, I mean-
Yeah, it, um, we would have to determine fair market value before we sell it. We don't have to do that when you acquire it.
So, how does an inspection enter into that? Does it, does an inspection by a certified inspector ever enter into that? Are we gonna be, uh-
No, an inspector does not determine value.
No, not value, but condition, and condition, uh,
Make a difference.
The FX appraisal.
In most of these cases, we're, we're probably looking at condemnation.
Condemnation, okay.
Would be my guess. Because if, if we weren't, the ADO program would be handling all this stuff. And we're running into people who aren't cooperating.
Okay, so-
And you don't have the team to do it, right?
How do we, how do we, how do we get, uh-
It's, and you always wanna do it on the voluntary side if you can do it, but if you can't, you have to have the ability to move the next step.
So, I'm gonna, I'll just be the devil's advocate here. I have a house that's ready to fall down. I don't. I don't. But, okay, but you have an appraiser that comes in and says that my house that's ready to fall down is worth ten thousand dollars. But I think my house is worth at least fifty thousand dollars. How do we resolve that?
Through the condemnation process, you have to go with, with the appraiser. You have to pay fair market value. And that's something not everybody understands is condemnation doesn't mean you just grab it and go. You have to pay fair market value. And in some cases, these have negative fair market value.
Oh, I would, I would, I would agree with that.
Sure. Because hostile territory exceeds the value of the property.
But every homeowner's gonna say, "A water tap's twenty-five grand."
If they know that. If they know that.
I mean, the city's not giving out any more water taps, are they?
Yeah.
Yeah, who wants, but, what are those running?
They're what they are.
And both, man?
They're not, they're not that much, but, no.
They're higher extra, so they don't, they don't have that in town.
But, okay, I just, uh, so, I think we oughta- So, these letters that, uh-
That we would like to use.
We would like to use, and will, and will that give us the means that we need?
Yeah, you start with the voluntary side, um, and then it, it just keeps moving if people don't respond. Because we, the, you know, if, the easiest way to do it is you write them a letter and say, "This building's in horrible shape. Please renovate it, or do something with it," and they do. But that isn't happening all the time.
So, how long does it take, would it take, even in an involuntary? If we take that, wrote down, how, possibly, how long do you think that'll take?
We haven't done condemnation here for a very long time. Because it's always the last thing, the last step you wanna take. It's not, you should never do it as your initial step.
Now, and also, legal fees, what is that gonna cost if someone files a civil suit? We're trying to condemn the property. Can't, they can't turn around and sue.
Well, they can contest it.
Yeah.
They can contest it. And then they have to bring their legal, vehicles down to do that.
Yeah, but do, uh, less cover that?
Or it could do nothing, or-
Possibly, we may have to get a different attorney too for specialty type stuff.
So, that's another expense that's hidden out there, could, could possibly-
It is, but I, that's what it's worth, yeah. But, but I, I think that the, the whole, the whole, you know, the, everything comes with negatives and positives and the, and the, the process of like which you have, you would have to go through creates a burden. But if, if you look, you know, in, in the end, if we're, we're looking to do something in and for the city of Trinidad, and it's the elimination, you know, there's a lot of stuff out there that, you know, we, we, we tend, we tend to think, and I tend to think that, you know, Trinidad is undergoing somewhat of a renaissance right now. Things are happening here. And, and we're, we're looking and we look, you know, we want that downtown, and you see improvements in downtown. But then the, the, the residential neighborhoods have a lot going on, the, the ADO has a, a long list of homes that need, that people aren't responding to. And I think if, if we wanna make it a, you know, a good town, a good-looking town on the surface, we need to address those things, you know, and, 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 you know, this is the beginning point of it. Uh, you know, this is, you know, this is the creation of the document. This is, you know, we have to, you know, create now what we wanna do in action. You know, this is, what we're doing here is trying to structure a document. We have to get through, we have, we'll have to be working with the other agencies of the city, including city council, see how we wanna make this happen. But I think, you know, in, in some cases, uh, we haven't done it, but then we have the authority to do it is go to condemnation. Nobody wants to do it, nobody likes to see it happen, but in some of these cases, I don't know, some of the property owners really would care. It's an easy way out.
Yeah, and, and, but this doc, this document is written so that you start with voluntary acquisition, and if that doesn't work, you move to the involuntary side.
How long does, do we, I mean, so we've given this voluntary acquisition letter?
Right.
How many days do we have to wait before, or, before we give them the, will, will you move forward with involuntary?
That's not defined in here. We could truly define it.
I think you should.
We, well, I think- I think that's clear. I mean, for the people that are getting the letter, I, I mean, we have to think in terms of how they would feel. Well, you have thirty days, or you have sixty days, or whatever we decide. To, you have thirty days to, to respond to this letter, and then they choose not to, then, then we can move forward. Without defining the time limit, do we have a legal stamp?
Well, we will. What, what time limit do we throw on? I mean, and we, and do we don't, and in my opinion, we don't wanna be too liberal on it because if we're, if, you know, they say, "Okay, it's been there for five years, look at my, it looks, and it's worse now than it was." So, you know, being liberal with them, I say, it's like, hey, here's, here's, here's what we see in a time limit, and we don't hear from you, we go to the next step.
Well, why is that, thirty days?
Yeah, I, I think you say they have to respond in thirty days or less.
Yes, thirty days.
And if they respond, then you negotiate-
But you gotta find them first.
That's right.
So, would we recommend having certified mail?
For return receipt?
Yeah. And the document, uh, will, will, how we send it, or will we, I don't think that needs to be in there.
And then you get a detective.
And we go get Charlie Glorio, so, search it down.
I'm sorry, with the return receipt, it could take thirty days or more just for the post office to get back to you if they don't deliver it. I mean, you, you may not know for a long time whether it's been delivered or not.
It may be true. Well, I think we still say thirty days.
From the date it's on the letter.
If you look under voluntary acquisition, number two, it talks about doing certified mail or return receipt.
Yeah.
And then it shows what you, you would still include. So, all we need to do is add for thirty days or less.
Okay, let's do it.
See, I think personally-served, like, with a, a service, but that's not- Some of these houses are called out of town.
Well, some of these houses, you don't even know if there were heirs involved, you know, you just don't know. We're not gonna find people in every case.
What are you, can you mail the letter to whatever the address is on file with?
With the assessor's office.
The assessor's office, yeah.
Yeah, you, I mean, you throw it and hope that it sticks. So, it's just a matter of, yeah, we, you know, but, you know, get it out there, and you know, you may, in thirty days, have it back seeing, well, it was undeliverable. And then you have to go to the next, a lot of them, it's, delivery refused.
Yeah.
That's what it comes down to.
So, then you go automatically to the next step, and what if they refuse that to it?
Well, sometimes if they've not paid their taxes, and their taxes, that leaves tax certificates, they're sold at the tax sale, somebody might carry that tax certificate for three years and then file for a D, uh, fourth year. Okay, and so now we're dealing with a new owner. So, it might be, you know-
New owner in Chicago that bought, did, uh, cheap liability. Because, you know, he gave me three hundred bucks and bought him a house.
Would the treasurer's office have that information?
They do have that. And I was thinking that maybe with some of these, I don't know how complicated it is to find out if we have a list of, of properties, to cross-reference that with, uh, with Don, uh, to find out if the, the taxes, that, the taxes have been, uh, they've been tax certificates issued to a different party, to save us-
Which he has a little bit for us, he could pull it up on the computer.
So, that might be another step that we could go through with some of these properties that have been vacant for a long, long time.
So, I have a question for you, Greg.
Okay.
Okay, so, so we're, we're trying to put all this in place, and it's going to require a whole lot of work. You got a lot to do as it is. So, you know, how, how, how are we going to incorporate this? Will we be able to use the building inspection department, or, because I mean, this, this, if we, if this, you know, we get this thing to snowball and get going, you know, as, as executive director, you got a lot of other stuff to do for the city besides do this stuff.
There is, we will have to involve building inspection to assess or contract with asbestos removal people if we get to that stage, is the contract with the demolition people. They're doing that now. So, there's no reason we would not do that, so, true. Urban Renewal does not have the staff to do this kind of stuff, so we have to rely to some extent to this.
Right.
It tells later somewhere in this document about a program manager. Is that what you're talking about?
Well, yeah, I mean-
Yeah.
It's just-
And right now, program manager in here is, wah.
You gotta see the Trinidad pose.
Well, I, I-
They did hire a program manager in Montevista though.
Yeah, because, I mean, is, it's, it's, I'm sorry, within discussion, I mean, we, we see where it goes. But if we, if this really becomes, we initialize this thing to make it go, it's gonna have a lot of working parts to it. You know, and it's just a matter of, yeah, can we, can we, can we try to put that, you know, that much more work on you besides being our director, I mean, we, we probably gonna have to have some-
We, we, we may find, if, if this moves forward and starts taking some time, we may find we have to hire somebody. And it may be a contract relationship, not a full-time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I think-
But I, I, I do wanna warn you, that is a potential.
Yeah.
I mean, if you want the program to be successful, you gotta start going after this stuff.
And who would pay for it?
You must have, like, urban renewal.
Urban renewal.
I don't.
I don't.
That's what I was saying.
And, and, you know, and, and one of the things, I mean, it, it, it doesn't, you know, I don't think we'd go out and look to level, you know, half the neighborhoods in the town, because it's unaffordable. But I mean, you know, gauge the ride and put it out there. I mean, if, if, if property owners know that this-
Yeah.
Tura is lurking and going to be doing these things, it might put them in a position, do one of two things. "I gotta do something or else this could happen, or I'm gonna wait around for they come and get it and relieve me of a problem." It could go both ways.
Could go either way.
Either way. But in, in the end, the goal is accomplished.
Right, yes.
Right, well, we want that to happen.
At least we have a mission here.
Yeah.
Or direction.
Yeah. But, but, I'd like to see the improvement of some neighborhood. I mean, obviously, we want a lot of things to happen for the downtown, and I think there's, you know, some of that's on the brink of being done. But the, 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 the neighborhoods are in dire-
It's a very important change.
Yes.
They need, they need, they need us.
I know on the positive side, everybody's property value would increase. They remove these buildings and build new homes, so, yeah, it's, that's like a dump. Gets valued as a dump.
Yeah.
So, do we need to, do we as a commission need to do, uh, anything but the, the first letter? The voluntary acquisition notice?
If I could make a suggestion? I'm thinking if we got our document and all of our ducks in a row within the document, then look at the notices. Might be easier to construct those to match what our actual program is.
Well, you're talking about the ADO stuff?
I'm doing this with the exhibits?
The exhibits.
Oh, so you, you want the blanks filled in, so we know that it says?
No, I want, I want this, I want this part of the document completed before we spend time going over the exhibit.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And I, and I think that's what we're trying to accomplish now, is how we wanna make those edits, so we can have something else to probably re-edit.
Yeah, as you can see on the voluntary acquisition, exhibit one, the first line is already needs to be rewritten, based on what we've already talked about. If we're not gonna be receiving funding now, assistance from the US Department of Housing and Development.
Right, well, all right. So, we're gonna be making some, some edits to the program, which, or the document, which is gonna pull out DOLA in any words mentioned. What else?
Why does it say we will not pursue imminent domain?
Sir, on which one? I'm looking at voluntary acquisition. "If you are not interested in selling your property, or if we cannot reach an amicable agreement for the purchase of your property, we will not pursue its acquisition under imminent domain."
It's because the imminent domain thing says that we will not, uh, go there unless there is an imminent threat to safety or safety of the public, or that it's classified as a dangerous property. So, um-
That's the first answer.
We can add that language to both sections, though, saying that we will not pursue it if it's not considered a safety hazard. And I don't think we're gonna go after it if it's not considered a safety hazard. Yeah, I think that's a key to this thing, is we're not gonna go acquire people's property just to acquire their property. That makes no sense.
We've got, we've got some targets, actually, this way.
Yeah. So, I could, I could add language to that section that says essentially the same thing, that we'll start with the voluntary acquisition, but again, we're going after properties that are considered, um, a safety hazard. Does that sound better?
Yes.
I'm sorry. We were discussing something, what did you think yourself?
That I can add language to the voluntary acquisition that says, um, same as the imminent domain one, that we will not go after properties unless they are an imminent threat to public safety or considered dangerous. That that's the standard we worked on first. Because the object of this program is to clean up whole dilapidated buildings. It's not to clear property to, yeah, that- Urban Renewal has the legal right to clear property and sell it to a developer. But that's not what I think the purpose of this program is.
Well, and the city has ordinances to deal with ediths, right?
Yeah.
So, where you put that, that we won't go after imminent domain, but in parentheses, put, "And maybe we will."
Well, maybe.
And maybe we will, so, yeah.
Unless.
Unless, yes.
Okay, anybody else want to add anything in there? And Greg from us, do you need any more? Anything for takeaway from today, do we have?
I have plenty of things I can do here that will, that'll change this document. One of the things that is in here that I wanted to refer to too is, they refer to federal standards when it comes to eminent domain, and realistically, I think those should stay there because there are protections for them. You're, you're providing so much background work and doing due diligence so that no one can come back and say, you just took this property, you didn't think about it.
Yeah, that's a safety net.
Yeah, so I think it's good to use that kind of standard. I think that protection is necessary, just from a risk management standpoint.
And I think if you have, when the document's finished, you have an attorney review it. That'd be beneficial as well, just to make sure that this board's not in any violation of state or city or codes or made to get sued. I'm in court all the time.
Well.
I inherited three lawsuits when I got to the courts. I've got to do that.
If you read the, the, the act that authorizes urban renewal, the intent says, urban renewal has the right to sue and be sued.
Right.
Yeah. And the city has a, a good insurance to protect us, right?
Yeah.
What else? I mean, as long as everything we enter into, they, enter into things in, doing the right way, you're not gonna be all good and I don't know, but. Okay, so is there anything else that we want to add? We've had a good hour and a half on this thing.
Think what made some real progress.
Well, at the end of the day, if we were to start this project, your ideas would be starting to come to fruition as well, your overall brand view. Well, we're starting one thing at a time in our own new community, so. And I like the fact that if, in a few years, this already gets going, then property taxes go up, unless Amos County will be better for it.
Well, that's one thing, is, I mean, those things are at minimal value, minimal cap rate. So what's Allos County will get it, and urban renewal will get it too.
So everybody will.
It also.
Some of this language in here is, is language where you could work with a nonprofit like Habitat or something like that. They're the entity that would build nine hundred to a thousand square foot homes, because their mantra is simple, decent, and affordable. They even get picked up if you put in basements and garages.
Do we have an active Habitat?
No.
It's hard to keep one going because it takes forever to raise money to build a house. It's really hard.
Especially now.
But they'll build a four, four, twelve pitch.
I put up two of them under Habitat, and it took a while.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's a lot of moving parts that have to come together, and it's.
And the other, well, the other thing that works really good with Habitat is, they don't just sell houses, the people who get the house become perter, and so you, they become your partner, they help you build the house, they know more things about their house than the average person that buys a house. They know where all the wiring is, they know where the plumbing is, they know everywhere.
Sure, because they've been actively involved in its construction.
And also, you work with them, teach them how to budget, how to manage the household, how to make sure they're making payments, and all those kind of things, because the whole purpose is success.
And what program the council government has, you might work with this, maybe the rehab of some old homes.
Okay.
For individuals and for their bathrooms and their fixing up when they get, when they get older. I'm gonna ask the board in our next meeting if they would expand into possible new construction.
Go to your desk.
Might be a possibility, for funding and everything else that they have, so.
Go to your desk.
For that load up moderate income folks or whoever.
What do we consider moderate income?
Well, it's very, very low. Moderate income is, it's a, it's a floating number based on number of people in the household, but that is a federally available number. Around here, I think in its, the high thirties, low forties, for a three-person family, that's usually the standard they give out, but if you have an eight-person family, then it's six or seven. But we have a lot of people that aren't even coming close to that. When you, you know, affordable housing means that you don't pay more than thirty percent of your income from house. There's a lot of people out there paying fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty percent. I don't know how they're surviving.
Well, that's where subsidies should, of course, there's not that much, I mean, I think the subsidy housing is all occupied too.
Yeah.
Well, if you build an economy, you can keep up their work, then.
Well, it should, that should, it should create a flow.
It should create a flow, I mean, our, the whole purpose is to help get them, get them from where they are, staying, to another level. And that's, but that's, hopefully.
That's another headache for the county. Exactly, we need to nail on the head, we want them to try and get these folks on their work programs that they have, other counties are doing in our county, we're having lots of discussions with our administrator, why not?
You mean, to get them to participate in a work program?
Yes.
I agree, I agree.
Because it's just draining the taxpayer, this community code entitlement program.
Yeah.
And the county can't afford the entire match, which required by state, federal numbers, so.
Well, and that's true.
Our staff needs to work harder, so everyone else does better, and, but, I don't want to badmouth anybody, but it's on the table.
Well, I think it's a good thing.
Always been a thing.
You know, this community has been, you know, how many generations have been?
Generations and generations.
Generations.
Just, just dependent.
Well, we've got, again, a good hour and a half in on this, now almost hour and forty minutes, does anybody have anything else they would like to add to this that we're gonna, Greg, have we given you enough?
I think so.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else, because what we will do is maybe take a five-minute break, because we have some discussion, and we're gonna go to a special meeting here in just a couple of minutes. So if you want to take a five-minute break, and we'll, we can be here about five forty-five, we'll hit the gallon at five forty-five.